3.01 Returning from Closed Session.
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of our knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion to go into executive session were heard, discussed, or considered in executive session.
Second.
My motion's been made by Mrs. Morris and second by Mr. Gregory to return from closed session. Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 We are in open session. 3.02 Certificate of Action Taken in Closed Session.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the personnel agenda as amended.
Second.
My motion's been made by Mrs. Morris and second by Mr. Gregory to approve the personnel agenda as amended. Are there any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, the motion carries. 3.03 Opening of the Regular Meeting. Please stand, and we will have a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we just thank you right now, Father, for this wonderful countenance that you've given us to raise our children. I pray, Lord, that your Spirit will lead and direct us more to do what is right and correct unto your eyes, and to serve diligently with all of God. I pray your blessing upon all the leadership in the schools, all the teachers, all the staff. Lord, I pray blessings upon them, Father. I pray that you will bless them with peace and also wisdom. And I give this meeting to you, Lord. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It leads us to 3.04 Adoption of the Agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Give me what is being amended.
We are adding...
7.01.
Seven, yeah. 7.10 Cost of Admission to Athletic Events.
All right. Does someone second that?
Second.
Okay. My motion's been made by Mrs. Morris and second by Mr. Jamerson to adopt the agenda as amended, adding 7.10 Cost of Admission to Athletic Events. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, motion carries. It leads us to 4.01 Senior of the Month.
It is my pleasure to recognize our Senior of the Month for October 2025, Brayden Goolsby. Brayden is the son of Emily Goolsby. Brayden has been attending Buckingham County Public Schools since his freshman year. He currently holds a GPA of 3.8 and has been taking dual enrollment classes since his junior year. Brayden has been involved in baseball, indoor and outdoor track, golf, soccer, church band, junior ROTC Raiders, FBLA, and Skills USA. He has also helped clean up the highway with the junior ROTC program, and in his free time, when he has no sports or work, he attends his church's youth group program. His hobbies are fishing, golfing, working, working out, and carpentry. His favorite memory from Buckingham County High School is the pickleball tournament for the Rise Up Club. After graduation, Brayden plans to attend the trade school at Newport News for welding. Congratulations, Brayden.
Could Brayden's family please come forward? Anyone who wishes to address the school board must state their name and address and limit their comments to three minutes. Speakers must refrain from referring to employees by name. The school board will not entertain comments regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate forms for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate a court proceeding. This is a time for comments only. Board members do not respond to the comments made. Questions should be submitted to the school board in writing and will be given to the appropriate person to answer as soon as possible.
Kate Lambert.
Good evening, Chairperson Bryant, Vice Chairperson Snotty, members of the school board, and Superintendent Reesner. My name is Kate Lambert. I'm the CEO of Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Virginia. As you may be aware, our organization operates the James River Boys and Girls Club in Scottsville. We're located in the Scottsville Community Center. We're proud to be celebrating our 11th year of providing students from Buckingham, Albemarle, and Fluvanna Counties with a safe and productive place to be when they're not at home and not at school. Our club provides youth development programs every day after school and all day during the summer to young people between the ages of five and 18. Our programs focus on academic success, health and well-being, character and leadership, and life and workforce readiness. Our goal is to be your partner in preparing students for what's next. I'm proud to share that this past summer, we served more than 30 students from Buckingham County Public Schools. We know that access and affordability mean everything to area families. We know that many parents and caregivers work multiple jobs to support their families and make ends meet. I'm pleased to say that the cost is never a barrier to participation in our club programs. We are committed to maintaining a membership fee of only $35 for the entire year. Our greatest challenge is getting children to the club for our after-school program. And I fully acknowledge the transportation challenges faced by our public school partners, including Buckingham County Public Schools. We're right there with you. Currently, our James River Club Unit Director, Cardale Emery, who's sitting over here, picks up 14 primary, elementary, and middle school students from Buckingham schools and brings them to our after-school program in Scottsville. We're limited to 14 students because of the size of our bus. We know of at least 17 additional primary and elementary students who don't have transportation to the club. Some have had to cancel or pause their club memberships. When children go home on the bus rather than coming to the Boys and Girls Club, we don't know what access they have to healthy food, or any food for that matter. We don't know what supervision they have or the activities they're engaging in. They may be on social media or playing video games, we just don't know. What we do know is that it's better for them to come to the club after school than it is for them to go home on the school bus. It's better for them to come to the club where they can be with their friends, receive a healthy snack, participate in enrichment activities like academic tutoring, reading, STEM, and arts activities. They can participate in drone soccer and flight simulation, and they can stay active, play sports, and learn life skills like financial literacy. Most importantly, club members know the club is a place where adults care about them. They want them to feel safe and included and want them to learn and succeed. I'm joined tonight by our staff and volunteers from the club.
Your three minutes is up. I'm sorry, your three minutes is up. Public comment is closed now. It leads us to 6.01 Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
My motion's been made by Mr. Goodman and second by Mr. Snotty to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the motion?
I have a question. One of the things listed was student engagement materials. What are they?
You'd have to be more specific of what the vendor was. What was the vendor that you were referring to?
Yeah, yes.
Who was the vendor?
I did not write that one down.
Yeah.
Okay.
I had to look.
I mean, are they just used for... I don't need to know what they were, I just want to know what they're used for.
I have that Amazon business. Oh, I have to do $787.85.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
All right, I'll have to do some research and find out.
I just want to know how we're using them.
It's paid for by our school permit grant, so it's...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, the motion carries. It leads us to 7.01 Student Liaison Report.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I first want to begin with Buckingham County High School's clubs. So, the Rise Up Club is hosting a Field Day fundraiser for a fellow student on Friday the 10th. This is for a student who is undergoing treatment for health issues. All the money made from this fundraiser will go to the family to pay for food, gas, and medical bills. Hosa Club hosted a bake sale at the 2025 Homecoming Game. SCCLA hosted a toiletry drive for shelters around the community. They also sold chocolate bars and pom-poms at the Homecoming Game. FFA and various clubs competed at the Virginia State Fair this past week. Many students placed in overall categories. SCA is hosting a regional workshop on October 18th. They are also holding the VSCA State Advisory Committee on November 8th. SCA would also like to thank everyone for their help in making Homecoming a huge success. They are now working on setting up the trunk retreat. For sports, varsity football won their game yesterday Tuesday... I mean, varsity volleyball won their game yesterday, Tuesday, October 8th. They beat Cumberland, winning three of the four sets played. Varsity football won the 2025 Homecoming Game, beating the Randolph Henry Statesman 43-8. JV football is currently tied, JV volleyball is currently tied for number one in the district. Some extras, the Knights Armored Food Pantry is officially open for Buckingham County residents. Mrs. Snotty and various students went to the Jordan Point Marina and visited the Brock Environmental Center to test water quality and biodiversity. And this year's Homecoming Queen and King were Brayden Jamerson and Tamiya Holman. That's all, thank you.
What time was the stuff on the tent? I'm sorry.
The tent?
Yeah.
The time?
Yeah, for the Rise Up, for the one student.
It's all day.
All day?
Mm-hmm. All day.
That's the fundraiser for the student, you said?
Yes. It's for a student with health issues.
On the tent, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Leads us to 7.02 Presentation in Recognition of VSBA Academy Awards.
It's my pleasure to provide these Award of Excellence from the Virginia School Boards Association for members of our school board for their participation in the VSBA School Board Academy for 2023-2024.
Congratulations, Mr. Bryant. Congratulations, Mr. Lamper. Congratulations, Mr. Lamper. Congratulations, Ms. Morris.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Snotty.
Thank you, ma'am.
You don't have a thing yet.
That's fine.
Congratulations, Mr. Gregory.
Thank you, ma'am.
Congratulations, Mr. Lamper.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mrs. Oliver.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Mr. Ross.
Please join me in giving them a round of applause for their participation in professional learning with the Virginia School Board Association.
Along that same thing, we are now a master board again. We completed training for that on September the 24th, so we are one of five in the state, and it's 132 school boards, so I think we should clap for each other. All right, 7.03 Instructional Update by John Ringstaff, Director of Instruction.
I prepared a monthly instructional update, and I'm going to begin the update with a little bit more detail on the cut score changes that's weighing on the hearts and minds of many of our staff. You know, when I'm out in the buildings, interacting with teachers and principals and assistant principals, you know, this often comes up, questions about this matter. So, I thought it would be to the board's benefit to provide some information. So, the new cut scores, which are included in the slideshow, have been approved. Now, the only thing that we are awaiting guidance on and vote on is, on October 24th, there will be a vote to determine if the implementation of these new cut scores will include a phase-in period. And previously, I've told you that I've heard that the Superintendents Association wanted eight years. That is likely not to happen. The phase-in approaches that I've seen evidence of are recommendations for a four-year or a five-year phase-in. And I've also heard from regional, because the Virginia Department of Education has held superintendent regional meetings, I've heard from those other regional meetings that there has been a request to do a one-year phase-in and then pull the Band-Aid approach. We will know whether or not these are phased in on October 24th. So, what is changing? What is new? Well, first off, on the next slide, you can see, these are the newly adopted passings and advanced scores on your SOL test. This only impacts English from grade three through, and of course, reading, and it impacts math from grade three through geometry. You can see that the cut scores have increased. And just for the board's, just for a little background for the board, I have included on the next slide, our performance in Buckingham County for 24-25, what this would mean if we retroactively applied the new cut scores to our scores from this past spring, so that you can see a real impact of what's going to change here. I want to draw your attention to the approaching category. Again, that, we understand that to be a pass score, but it's not official yet. That will be determined October 24th. So, the approaching is only going to be there for the phase-in period, whether it be one, four, or five years. And the approaching is meant as an indicator to parents, students, and staff that students do not meet the new passing score, pass proficient, but they wanted to indicate how close they are, how they're approaching growth. So, in our regional meetings and in meetings with staff, you know, on a one-to-one basis or small group basis over the past month, I often get asked, or we discuss, how are we going to react to this? What are the mitigation strategies? What do we do different? And the two things that come out, and this sounds like tough medicine, but the two things that often I hear about are, we've got to raise our rigor in the classroom. And that's not just in Buckingham, that's across the state. We've got to raise our rigor, and we've got to make sure that our instruction is aligned to the VDOE performance level descriptors. In other words, a student performing at this level should be able to and really use that language and craft our instruction to meet that expectation. The state also includes in their slideshows of information that increasing expectations can lead to initial drops in student performance. There's often a rebound, and this was observed in Tennessee, Massachusetts, and Illinois. And so, the VDOE did illustrate that. My last slide is more specific to the comings and goings this past month. We, the superintendent and I have been in several buildings. We've observed instruction, like for instance, we observe fourth and fifth grade classrooms at Buckingham Elementary School, and I want to praise Ms. Morris in her observation tool that she allowed me to use. It's one of the best I've seen as far as capturing what's going on inside that classroom. And it's targeted at a lot of areas, but I see that as a very strong tool for observing teachers and providing feedback. At the high school, we observed all the science teachers, and I noticed that there was a lot of inquiry going on, a lot of model representations, just good question asking, and there was good note-taking, like good graphic organizers, and I felt like in every space I was in, the students were engaged, they knew the expectation, and they respected the teacher. So, that was reassuring. Although it was too recent to include in my update, we have observed the preschool, and we're impressed with the instruction there. It's very, very different. As someone not used to preschool instruction, it's a very different look-forers, and so we were very impressed with what we saw. A lot of questioning, a lot of feedback loops, that if you didn't know what to look for, and Ms. Walker was very good about pointing out what we should be looking for, I was very impressed. Middle school observations will take place on October 20th, and before I close out, I just want to say, Ms. Bryant does an excellent job in managing the data. I've been present for both English or reading and math data meetings, and I think you would be impressed with how she guides her teachers to be accountable for every single student. Like, these screening scores at the beginning of the year, they'll look at it again in the mid-year, and they'll look at it a final time in the spring. And so, you know, they are writing them down themselves, they're talking about the results, they're talking about kids, and so each of these teachers, AM and PM, are very accountable for each child. So, it's very reassuring to me what I'm observing in these spaces. I wanted to invite, Mr. Tally approached Dr. Reesner and myself with an idea, and it's about graduation, and so we asked him to prepare a slideshow for you and to share how this originated with students and just some of the details that he's investigated about how we're going to honor our graduates in the spring. All right? So, Mr. Tally?
Dr. Ringstaff, before we move on to that...
Yes, sir.
I just have, Madam Chair, for me. How are we preparing our teachers, and how are they feeling in reference to the SOL scores being up? Are we, do we, are we giving them everything that they need to be successful to teach our students?
Well, to answer your earlier question, how are they feeling about it? They're worried, there's a lot of anxiety. And so, and I don't want to just blow past their anxiety because it's real. I'm a former chemistry and biology teacher, and so if I was teaching a subject where that cut score was changed so drastically, you know, I think these teachers are starting to think, what is it I need? Is it planning? Is it delivery of instruction? And you start to get into, to answer your last question, are we giving them everything they need? I would hope so. I've not said no to requests. As a matter of fact, there was a request, even with the budget tightening, to purchase a service that really targeted literacy and science. And, you know, as a science person, one of the barriers, especially in elementary education, to teaching science is, there's a lot of vocabulary. And sometimes you've got teachers that are themselves not real comfortable with the vocabulary. And, you know, Ms. Morris and her team identified a particular resource that really brings in literacy, which is a focus of these increased cut scores, but also brings in that science piece. So, when they're learning, you know, the vocabulary and the words and reading passages, it's really doing two things at one time. So, we've got to, that's why I thought that service was important for them, and so we've got to start to think efficiently about, how do we tackle two things at once? You know, how do we get two birds with one stone? So, if there's a teacher that wants something, you know, I've not told anybody no yet, if they want something out, I would impress upon you that I've had an open door, I try to be responsive to email, I try to go talk to people one-on-one. I want them to know that I'm approachable, and I want them to feel comfortable in sharing with me what they need, okay? I've had lunch, the math department's invited me for lunch, and I have lunch twice with them. You know, that's, I think that's a good model. I'm very much about breaking bread with people and getting to, you know, I want them to get to know me and know that I'm approachable, so if they have to ask for something, I want them to feel comfortable doing that. I mean, my job is to support them.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
One more question.
Well, why don't we do this? When you leave, are you coming back up to close up shop, or once you step off, it's everybody else, and then you're done?
I'll stay for questions. Do that.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So, just as an example, when it says raise rigor in classrooms to match what is expected on the test. So, as an example, I'm a parent, and I find out that my child has fallen in the failed basic. What would be an example of what you would do and what I could do as a parent to be able to accomplish that goal, to raise the rigor?
Well, the teacher, so it would be, the, it's really, it sounds so boring, but it's really getting at the heart of what you're teaching. And so, when I use that language, the VDOE performance level descriptors, you're really trying to get into, if you're teaching a topic, and the standard asks for the depth of applying or synthesizing material, and you're only teaching that material to a recall level, then we're not preparing the student to perform well on that standard on the test. So, it's really, inside of a classroom, it's really an analysis of what I'm doing to teach a topic. Am I teaching it to a level that's required by the standard? And am I assessing that? It's almost like a loop of teaching. Now, the struggle with that, and your experienced teachers will bring this up to you, is the struggle, like those teachers can plan that material, and they can share resources with parents and families at home to build on that. But one of the frustrations that we've got to work through that I'm seeing is students arriving in a class really not prepared with the background material for them to receive that increased rigor of instruction. So, the way you defeat that is, you start to vertically align, and you have conversations with individuals before, you know, if I'm receiving a student from eighth grade science as a ninth grade environmental science or biology teacher, I often use science examples, so bear with me, then I want to make sure that they're covering in eighth grade science certain topics so that when they get to my class in environmental science, I'm not reteaching things they should have learned before, okay? And so, it is a team effort, we're in this together, and sometimes, you know, what happens, well, always, what happens in the primary school affects the elementary school, what happens in the elementary school affects the middle school, and ultimately, it's a buildup, multi-year buildup, so that they're performing enough to the point for graduation and the verified credits that they're going to need. So, I think we attack it by vertically aligning, having vertical alignment conversations, we attack it with an increased attention to how we're developing our lesson plans and providing instruction, and we have to bring the parents on board with this, because the transparency of what's expected for homework, what should they be learning, you know, what should we be drilling at home? It's not just what happens in that classroom, it's, this is a multimodal tough problem. And it's going to take, it's not going to be, there's not going to be a silver bullet, it's not going to be a snap of the fingers. We have to buy in on a multi-year effort to increase these scores.
I have some too.
Go ahead.
It's all right. I got a couple of comments and questions, obviously.
Yes, sir.
They should be quick. Implementation, is it safe to assume we're looking at 26?
The implementation of the cut scores is immediate. It's, how long are they going to have that approaching category? I'm starting to believe it's going to be one year. Now, the DOE provided two options, four and five years. And what they heard, not from our region, but what they heard from other regions, and only know this because I'm close with a DOE person who was in each of the meetings with the regions. A lot of the other regions were requesting one year, and we pulled the Band-Aid, okay?
Now, to that point, the rebounding that was referred to with the other states-
Uh-huh.
Was the immediate rebounding sustained, or was it just because they were used to it following?
I don't, I don't have that answer for you.
Just curious, because we're talking about implementation and rebounding, means a lot of things to, a lot of people, I think. And if you rebound from a, a low percentage to, you know, from one year to the next, what did the, what the following year look? Did it carry forward? Did it stay the same? Did it go back up a, a lot, or, you know, when you're, when you're addressing how we're teaching things, that's-
Although I did not see data to give you a specific response, the narrative they portray is, after a couple of years, there was a rebound that was sustained.
On the rigor piece-
Until the next cut scores.
Right, yeah, till the next improvement, right. On the, the rigors of, of the classroom environment, I think that's a, it's a lofty statement. We have been in discussion numerous times about disciplining the classroom, being a holdback to teaching, so, we're attempting to address that across the board. I think, I think once we can get that to a certain degree or level, it'll probably help tremendously the teachers and their, their impact on the student's success in the classroom for this-
Absolutely.
The new cutting scores, but we're, we're working toward it. We're not there yet, but we're working toward it. And it's not, it's not at the back of our minds. It's at the forefront. Every meeting, it seems like we're talking about it, so-
Yes, sir.
Just comment, but thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Tally?
Good evening, y'all. So, Buckingham High School, we off to a great start so far this year, both in the classroom and disciplinary-wise. But, at this point, we want to talk about our graduation. I know it's several months out, but it's something that we would like to present to you guys, to try to get approval for, so we can go ahead and start our fundraising a little more, and, and things to get to that, to be able to do this. So, if we go to the next slide, you see our vision, our purpose. It's a big dream for our seniors to have a memorable, inclusive graduation experience. One of our goals is to celebrate the seniors in a way that reflects their hard work and school pride, but also, we want community inclusion, which means that we will be able to have more space for families, friends, and the entire BCPS staff. Just to give you a little bit about the history, I'm a transplant here, so, since I've been in Buckingham, I've been asking questions. I've been part of the graduation process. I can tell you that what I observed prior to 2020, the pan, the global pandemic, graduation ceremonies was held indoors. Since I've been here in 2022, the COVID-19 came, after COVID-19, most of the ceremonies have been outside, was due to more space and health concerns. Also, since being held on the football field, weather issues, the past two years, graduation has been held inside, with, two years ago being almost last minute, and last year, we started, decided to move it a little earlier in the week. That kind of caused a little uproar, because families want to see their loved ones graduate. The next page, you'll see some pictures I took from the outdoor graduation ceremony. This is from the left side, this is, I mean, right side, this is the left side of the field. If you go to the next slide, you'll see our indoor ceremony. You see, this is where the guests were sat at. The next image will show our staging area with the graduates and the administrators, and last year, was fortunate to have the, the board chair with the superintendent on the stage also. So, next slide, we'll give you a little bit of details about the graduation. The graduation setup and breakdown were done by staff and the maintenance department. I personally can tell you that the field, painting the fields, setting up the chairs, a lot of times, it came from admin, with, with the help of JRTC and some of our PE classes. About 1,000 chairs are rented for this procedure. Indoors, about 500 chairs, we rent from Chesterfield Rental. We rent the chairs, I mean, the stage, and also, the high school is used for staging of the graduates, whether it's indoor, outdoors. And the IT department runs the live stream for the graduation ceremony. A couple of concerns. One concern I had in some of my staff, my team, staff, yes, my team, one concern they had when it was outside, the temperatures have been upwards of the mid-eighties, up to the mid-nineties sometimes. We have numerous heat-related issues. Some guests would bring umbrellas, would block the, the view, or the, the rest of the staff that might be in the, in the grandstand. Also, there are a ticket count that we'll have. So, outdoors, usually is around 12 tickets. Indoors is anywhere from six to eight tickets, depending on the class size. Sometimes, usually it's four in the gym, as for like last year, and two for the auditorium. Next slide, we'll go over a typical cost for graduation, based on our last year. Just to run the air condition to a comfortable state, costs about 400 to 500, $450 to $500. We have sheriff departments. If we had, I know for a fact, outdoors, we had four sheriff departments. Indoor, I want to say, we had the same number. That's about $150. Would, this year, it'd be $150 per day. That's about $600. If we're outdoors, porta potters cost about $500. If you look down the breakdown, I showed the cost over the last four years. It showed we paid upwards of $3,200 just to have the ceremony because of the stage and the, the rental of the chairs. And the maintenance, that could be additional cost, because on Sundays, when the rental equipment comes back, we have to have maintenance there to, to greet them. That could be overtime pay. I'm not sure how JB does it, but I'm pretty sure it's a cost. So, a quick cost analysis, about 40, almost $4,800, $4,791, and $4,841, the cost to host it at Buckingham High School. The next slide show our vision, having graduation at Liberty University. We chose Liberty University, because Liberty University was cheaper than Longwood. Longwood started off at $15,000. Late on, you see the cost from Liberty University is why we chose that. Look at the center, the arena, it's, it's much larger. So, graduation details for 2020, with this year, '25, '26. Liberty University, they looked at the graduation as a community outreach, so there's no charge for the facility. They do not charge at all. There are only charges for the, the staffing. The Vine Center holds up. I have mixed numbers. When I look online, I saw anywhere from 8,000 to 95, 9,500. So, I went along the middle. I saw one that said 9,200, so that's what I went with. That's much more than what we have out on the football field. And they can easily accommodate our graduates and their guests easily. So, the next slide, you'll see some pictures. This is Amherst High School. It's a picture for their graduations the past year. The next slide show another picture from a different view. Next, we have one more slide, and that's from the side. You see the, the teachers are involved with the ceremony and on the stage also, which is a great visual for us also. So, the next slide, we'll talk about our proposal. So, the graduation package at the Vine Center includes the, the stage setup, floor chairs, live stream capability, concessions, custom backgrounded for school colors, indoor climate controlled venue. Additional features include, if we had a band or choir, they'd be able to participate. We can practice the day before the ceremony. We have full technical support for sound technicians, camera operators, lighting, and event management staff. We have a staffing plan, which includes traffic officers, custodial staff, event manager on site. We have camera and sound technicians, and maintenance support. I threw in there a transportation plan, in case we have feeling need to transport our, some of our students, or if we want to. I know me and Ms. Page, we talk about a possibility, maybe some senior citizens, or maybe some people in the community. We, that's something that's, that's kind of added on to it, but we, we visualize maybe five buses. We may only need three. The estimated time we calculated was four hours, one hour up, in between, whether the ceremony takes, give and take, maybe two hours for the ceremony, another hour back, for four hours, and the driver's rate right now is $16 an hour. That's what we, we estimated based on what Mr. Palmer told us. The next one, we talk about our projected cost, cost for to have the ceremony at Liberty University. With the given amount of buses that I spoke about, we have five buses, for example, four hours, $16 an hour. The fuel cost is probably about $40, I was estimated. So, it's coming up to about $520 for buses. The graduation package is $4,400, and we add on the live stream, it's another $350 for the total cost. With transportation is $5,270. Without is $4,500, $4,750, which is less than what we cost to have it here. One thing we, we put in mind, it's possible for this year, starting this year, moving forward, start offering class dues for, our required class dues for our classes. This year, we was to do $10 a, a student. We have about 160 students in our class right now. That'd be about $1,600 that can go towards, just out the gate. We also have fundraisers we've been thinking about. We already did a donut drive. Think about doing another one of those, maybe some concessions with the SCA, football, football game possibly, where we can do a senior night, get the families come in and support the concessions there. Also have a popcorn. Back where I live at, we have Uncle Dave's Kettle Corn. They do fundraisers also. We get 50% of the profits. There's some things we're thinking about. So, in August, Ms. Page and the, and the senior class officers, they came up with some surveys, and they surveyed, they sent it out to 160 students. We had about 82 families respond. Based on the survey, 65 voted yes. About 6% of those said that they would like to have the ceremony there any time of the day. 15% said they'd like to have it only in the evening, and 4% said they like it, but they need transportation. 17 votes, which is 21%, said no. So, the overall support is that people would like to have graduation there. One benefit of the, of the Vine Center is that the indoor comfort. You have a weatherproof ceremony, you have a larger audience capacity, professional-grade lighting, sound, and, and live stream. Of course, you have the opportunity for student, student performances, and then you have the convenient for families and community involvement, it's cost-effective. So, basically, when you have it here, like I mentioned, outdoors and indoors here at Buckingham, you have tickets. There, you give maybe 1,000 here, 1,500 here versus 8,000, 9,000 there. It's almost like unlimited, unlimited seating for our, our guests to come see their families. I want to commend the, the senior class. They put a lot of research into this. They shared it with me. I'm just the messenger. I fully support, and I hope you guys support us also. Thank you so much.
They put this together?
I put the presentation together. They gave me the information.
Right, right, but they did the numbers.
They did all the numbers.
That's good stuff.
Yep, they did all the numbers. But, yeah, it's, they brought a good idea to us. I figured like, it was worth bringing to you guys.
A question I have is, you normally have a photographer, you know, right after they get their diploma. Would you still be able to do that, or would they be-
Yeah, so, we, we, we with Herb Jones. Herb Jones does that for us.
Okay.
That's the, same thing as last year. They, they'll come with us. That's part of our package with them, is they, they provide those for us.
Just wanted to make sure, since it was a different venue, didn't know if they would, you know, make us go through them or something.
No, they, they'll be there.
Do we know why the no's?
Why's now the no's?
I just had a curiosity.
Do you have any idea why the no's?
I asked about the no's. Um, I, I, I mean, we are in a small community, so I, I messaged people and I asked. One said, because it was a weeknight, but, I mean, if you look at graduations in other counties surrounding us, most of them are on a weeknight. And another was just tradition, that it's always been here, they want to keep it here.
That's what I was looking for, see if I was-
It was, but it was very, I mean, there was, you know, just a very few that were those kind of things.
If you get, part of this practice, this pricing we have is, it has to be on a weeknight. The two nights we're considering is, is May the 19th or May the 20th. There's two dates they gave us, which is a Tuesday and a Wednesday night, I believe.
Are you asking us to vote on it at this point, or?
No, no, no. But, we, but we have to, when we go back and present, yes or no, if we say yes, we need to give them a date.
When is our deadline that we have to let Liberty University know by?
They would just like to know, I guess, as soon as possible, so that we can kind of lock in our date, and we can meet with them in person. They want to meet with us to, to get this rolling, so that they, so that we're prepared.
I have one small recommendation, if it goes through, is that we get the data on the backend, if we can. Obviously, we only got a percentage of the, the senior class now, but, you know, was it good, bad, whatever, for future?
Okay. And I know Appomattox and Amherst, Alta Vista, and Lynchburg schools all, you know, hold theirs there, and I've heard great things from, you know, my friends in surrounding counties. They like it because, you know, I, what stinks over here is if we have it inside in the rain, and somebody says, oh, can I bring my newborn? No, I'm sorry, you can't, because fire marshal says we have to have, you know, a certain amount of people. I needed one ticket per body. So, then, you know-
You're picking and choosing which family members get to come.
Right, exactly.
Exactly, yeah.
If you look at the, well, you guys should have access to. I can give it to you if you need to later. If you look at that picture we had up there of, of, what's it, what's it?
The Amherst.
Amherst, to my understanding, is a little bigger than us, but you saw they were new.
Plenty of seats left, yeah.
Right. And another vision is, I've, I've been on the elementary teaching end, where I taught elementary school, and then you see, you know, oh, that was my first class that graduated, and I have teachers that come to us every year. They're like, oh, can I get a ticket? Do you have an extra ticket? And, you know, that was my first class. I'd like to see them graduating. This way, we would like to open it up to the entire staff, and we could have the entire staff sitting behind these students, you know, so they can be a part of it. They were a part of raising them, so, right. So, it wouldn't just be the high school teachers, you know, so be the entire division. It'd be nice.
Oh, I get it. I, I totally get it. Yeah.
Mr. Goodman, you have a question?
Yeah, I would just say, I like the piece with the transportation in terms of providing, you know, transportation to the event, because to me, I think, you know, to the point to those 4% of people that said the tradition, I mean, you know, in my opinion, you know, that's what makes us who we are. We have, you know, that traditional thing. Every year, you know the graduation is going to be here. It's in our community, but I can understand the need for us to grow and to go to a different level. But, I would say that, I, I just think that we need to make sure that we provide an opportunity, and I don't know how we would do that. And you, you mentioned older people, or people that may not be able to get there, or may not have the means to get there. I would just say, make sure that we provide whatever resource it is that we need for those people that may not be able to get there, and may potentially have family members that may not be able to get there, or kind of how we go through that process to think that out, because I think some of it, in terms of just being local, it's just people can get there, you know, to the graduation. It was the utility of it, but if we're moving it, then we also should take into consideration those that may not be able to get there.
Yes, sir.
Like a pep bus, like we do for ballgames sometimes.
Yeah.
And we have local CDL, bus CDL, right, drivers. If we need to, we can reach out to them for some of our handicaps.
So, it will, yes, so it will, when I spoke to Mr. Palmer, this, this estimate was based on our school buses, as drivers, so, their, their bus will probably leave right after 5:00 maybe, for maybe a six, a later.
Seven, six or seven.
Yeah, so, maybe after their route, but we lose our drivers first.
Well, I think too, both of those days are early dismissal.
They both are early dismissal. So, yes.
It's a Tuesday and a Wednesday, the 19th and the 20th.
So, speaking with them, if they are early dismissal, because I believe you, then we can probably negotiate-
And we can gauge who might need bus transport, who might need transportation a little bit better, on kind of a case-by-case basis.
Your students will probably be your best source of in, input for that, yeah.
Well, Madam Chair, since the days are, they have been given days already, and they need to know as soon as possible, is this something that we can take a vote on today, since they have provided accurate information?
If we have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we take a vote on approving the graduation at the Vine Center.
Second.
A motion's been made by Mr. Gregory, and second by Mr. Snidey, to have our senior graduation at the Vine Center, but I don't know that we have picked a date.
We got something to work with.
Something to work with, yes.
You got something to work with.
So, is this informative? Is it, are they going to give us more information with regards to some things, or we just voting on just-
We're just, we're just voting on that for now, and then I guess that we'll come back with the date for sure.
The 20th is a full day, the 19th is a half day.
The 19th, 19th is a full day, 20th is a-
20th is a half day.
We would love updates on the, the, the fund drive and the stuff, too. That'd be crazy, yeah.
Well, let's, let's have a vote on this then. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. The motion carries.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 7.04, recommend approval of the VSBA Bullying Prevention Month proclamation.
So, the VSBA Board of Directors has designated October 2025 as VSBA Bullying Prevention Month, to raise awareness about the serious and lasting impacts of bullying in schools. Childhood bullying is a widespread issue that can lead to increased absenteeism, mental and physical health challenges, low academic performance, and even school violence. According to the Centers for Disease Control- According to the Centers for Disease Control from two thousand twenty-four, students who are bullied are at greater risk for depression, anxiety, sleep problems, decreased academic success, and dropping out of school. School board members, superintendents, educators, parents, and community members play an important role in creating safe and supporting learning environments. It has been proven that when adults and children stand together, bullying ends. I would now like to read the V S B A bullying prevention month proclamation, and ask all school board members and myself to please sign.
Okay, let me read it.
Okay. Whereas, school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States and Virginia, and whereas nearly twenty percent of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim, and whereas, an estimated ten percent of elementary schools, fifteen percent of high schools, and twenty-eight percent of middle schools reported the occurrence of bullying at school at least once a week, and whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and electronic, and can happen in many places, both on and off school grounds. Whereas, it is important for Buckingham parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying, and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community, and whereas, the Buckingham County School Board has adopted policies to encourage positive behaviors and to eliminate bullying behaviors. Therefore, the Buckingham County School Board recognizes the month of October two thousand twenty-five as V S B A bullying prevention month, with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in school and classrooms during that time.
Okay, so we need to make, we, we need to, um, make a motion on this, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the proclamation of bullying prevention month.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Goodman and second by Mr. Snoddy to approve the V S B A bullying prevention month proclamation as presented. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, the motion carries. That leads us to seven dot zero five, um, policy updates, J E C B, options one and two, admission of non-public students for part-time enrollment.
Good evening. So, I'm just sharing with you all, we have our current policy for J E C B, admission of non-public students for part-time enrollment. And currently, we have already approved option two of that policy, which limits part-time enrollment exclusively to homeschool students participating in J R T C. What we are asking is to, um, change the approval to option one. And option one authorizes part-time enrollment for students in non-public or homeschool settings, um, allowing participation in academic courses or extracurricular activities and clubs. Um, it does still require compliance with all school rules and prerequisites. Transportation, excuse me, transportation is the parent's responsibility. Um, credit would be awarded, but class ranking and GPA are not computed for part-time students, that wouldn't conflict with our full-time students. Um, and J R T C remains open to homeschool students per that policy. Um, so what this does is it expands that access to our private school students and homeschool students. Um, it supports community engagement and that positive relationship with the community that we're looking for. Uh, we have reached out to the community and, you know, to see if there was interest, and we have gotten feedback, lots of shares and talking about it. We've had several families call and want to get more information about what courses are available. And, um, currently, this is looking at just some high school, um, C T E classes or elective classes, where we have space available, not taking anything from our full-time students, but where we may have space currently. And so we do have interest, and so we wanted to open this up to, um, you guys to approve the option one for this policy.
I, I do have one question, and I know it's not stipulated here, but I just want to make sure that this is not for athletic participation.
Right, because V H S L still requires five courses, right, that you would have to have pass, so this would not, they would not qualify under that.
That's why they get the one statement, they get the one statement in there.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody knows.
Knows that, yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, uh, yeah, that was going to be my question, because, um, there, there has been a controversy around the country with kids that are homeschooled, um, and their parents are the kids wanting to play sports. But because they're homeschooled, and the parents say, hey, I pay taxes here, you know, why can't my kid play on the sports team? I just didn't want us to enter into any kind of controversy like that, I mean, I'm.
Right, we would still adhere to the V H S L rule for that.
I got you, yeah, yeah. The, the question was answered, I just wanted to kind of elaborate a little bit on as to why. I'm done.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I move we approve the adoption of one, J E C B, option one, excuse me, admission of non-public students for part-time enrollment.
Second.
A motion's been made by Mr. Snoddy and second by Mr. Gregory to approve the option one of policy J E C B, admission of non-public students for part-time enrollment as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, the motion carries.
Thank you.
That leads us to seven dot zero six, recommend approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget amendment.
Yes, this evening, we are requesting the approval of a two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget update. The purpose of this update is to receive a reappropriation of two thousand seventeen dollars, no, I'm sorry, two hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars from the county of state bonus funds that was given to school divisions in June, which was then in our year, which was then in our year-end balance at the end of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. We are also requesting an additional one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars in funds from the county that are, that are from the balance of the last two completed school division audits from two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and from two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school years. These transfers will increase the regular operating fund with a one-time revenue of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars, and will increase the cafeteria fund with a one-time revenue of sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars, for a total budget adjustment of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Once approved, we will present this request to the Board of Supervisors during their October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five school, uh, excuse me, meeting, with a planned distribution to employees in December as originally proposed.
What's the pleasure of the board? Any questions?
I move we approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget amendment as presented.
Second.
A motion's been made by Mr. Snoddy and second by Mr. Gregory to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six budget amendment as presented. Any questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, the motion carries. Seven dot zero seven, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven budget development calendar.
Okay, so we are sharing with you this evening, the two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven budget development calendar. As we receive additional information, we will continue to revise and update our calendar with you each month. Our budget development will start this month with principals and central office administrators providing input on areas of need for the upcoming two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. We have made a few changes to our budget development process, given our current areas of need. Employee intent forms for the two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven school year will be sent out in December prior to the start of winter break. We would like to hold our first school board budget work session on Wednesday, December third, to gain input on budget development. We have included the remaining activities planned between December and July first for your review and consideration. One focus area of our budget development that we are going to enhance this year is our communication with the county administrator and the board supervisors. We will be working collaboratively with them, and we will keep them closely apprised of our budget development process.
So, this, uh, we need to approve this then, right?
I'm just curious, are we, are we inviting, I mean, other than us coming to the school board, I mean, are we inviting anybody from the board supervisors to sit in or not?
So, um.
I know in the past, we've had.
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Mr. Carter had, uh, expressed an interest in meeting with us a couple of times pre, prior to our budget work session with them in March. So, we would like to, we would like to definitely do that with them.
We can bring that up when we go to the meeting next week, too.
Yes, and we'll be at the meeting on October fourteenth, we can mention it then, absolutely. We just want to be more proactive and have stronger communication and collaboration with the board supervisors going into this budget cycle.
Well, this is great, because I know, I think previously, it was like knee-jerk reaction come January timeframe for most of us.
No, and that's why we're seeking, you know, we've not done a budget work session in December before, that's really early, but given, given, given where we are with things, I, I feel it's essential that we have, um, time to work through some things. Um, Mrs. Oliver and I, uh, may be working over winter break a little bit on the budget, and so that would give us a little bit of information to go on, um, as we start preparing.
I move we approve the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven budget development calendar.
Second.
A motion's been made by Mr. Snoddy and second by Mrs. Morris to approve the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven budget development calendar as presented. Any questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, the motion carries.
Item seven point.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Superintendent Listening Day, seven dot whatever it was, zero eight.
Okay, so first, I would like to thank all of the staff members who took time out of their very busy schedules to meet with me either one-to-one in pairs or in small groups. Uh, decisions that are well-informed are based on using data from multiple sources, including stakeholder input. The Listening Days data is a key component in helping create my one-hundred-days report and offer recommendations for the future. A total of six Listening Days were held in August and September, in which seventy-five staff members met with me. Four of those seventy-five staff members met with me on two separate occasions. They shared with me areas of overall strengths, areas of concern, and overall suggestions for improvement. I have included every comment that was shared with me from every staff member in my report. The most prevalent comments include the following. My principal administrator is phenomenal, excellent, a team player, organized, caring, and communicates well. I love the people I work with on my team or within my department. The Listening Days were good, several people thanked me for holding them and giving them an opportunity to share. Love, I love working for my current director, it will be difficult to replace them. Buckingham County Public Schools must hire the right person for the job. Consequences for student behavior are not firm and consistent. Student behaviors are challenging. Teacher salaries are a concern. There needs to be more communication, especially face-to-face communication between staff and school administrators. More emphasis should be placed on vertical alignment and vertical planning. We need to reexamine our current health insurance in favor of the state health insurance plan, which is anthem to local choice, or perhaps something else. We need to hire more bus drivers and substitute bus drivers. We need to offer bus drivers the opportunity for a second contract to work as paraprofessionals or other employees on a five-hour contract. So, those specific comments were the most prevalent throughout the report, but as I stated, every comment, you know, I had to redact a little bit, um, to protect anonymity, but, um, every comment's listed there. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding our Listening Days data. I absolutely enjoyed this experience. Um, I learned quite a bit, it was an op, it was a great opportunity to get to meet people as well. Um, we will be holding two more Listening Days this school year. One will be in January with a strict focus on, um, the budget, and another one, um, in late April or early May with a focus on kind of wrapping up the school year. What are some things that you'd like us to think about as we plan for the upcoming school year?
Sure.
Um, so, and maybe you can tell me what this vertical alignment, can you explain that to me?
Uh, Mr., Dr. Ringstaff, if you don't mind.
It, it is a way in which you analyze your curriculum and actually what's going on in the classroom, K through twelve, so that when students transition from one year to the next, there, the, the instruction that took place prior to that student landing in your classroom is complimentary, and so it makes the building of knowledge much better if, if we have conversations or look at curriculum and say, you know, when, when we talk about, for instance, scientific investigation or measurement, what are you doing in, you know, back to my old example, how are you having them measure in eighth grade, and so that when they come to my classroom in ninth grade, they know how to use a ruler, they know how to use a digital scale? And, and so, it makes the instruction more efficient. Uh, this really came out of, um, I remember being a part of a lot of vertical alignment meetings as early as like two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, and the state got away from really pressing upon teachers to take the time to do, to have those kinds of conversations, but it's, it's an effort to make sure that we're very efficient with our instruction and that students are moving and transitioning on, prepared to be successful in the next year.
And, um, can I ask?
Go ahead.
And so, and I don't know if you can answer this question, I don't know who would be able to answer it. Uh, for the consequences of student behavior are not firm and consistent, I guess, it, could you, from your perspective, why do you think someone would feel that way, or what, how would we address something like that?
I'll give you a specific example, and, and this sort of pulls in vertical alignment in a non-instructional way, but if you have a student who is a fifth grader, strike another student, and, um, they're going to get a consequence that's really driven by elementary and primary types of, of prescription, you know, prescriptive behavior. But if that happens in a secondary level, you know, we have automatic consequences for X number of days suspended because you assaulted somebody. And so, that can oftentimes lead to a whiplash effect for a parent and a child, uh, who is used to a consequence in fifth grade of X, and they're now in sixth grade getting a consequence of Y that's much more severe. And so, um, that consistency, you, I can only speak, because my experience is secondary, and I was really in tune with the way Mr. Garrett, or Dr. Garrett and Mr. Tally, uh, are consistent in the way they give consequences. So, what, what I had and what they have is you have a disciplinary matrix, and, and that guides you, so when you get a certain behavior, you go to your matrix and you say, this is what we've done consistently with this behavior for a first offense. And so, once teachers start to see that consistency, they start to, to feel supported when they write a referral. And, and so, it's, it's that, it's just a special skill of administrators, because you don't want to talk about the consequences for a student, because it's really a private matter for a student. But, you know, sometimes, as our experience shows, we see them out of class for X number of days, or things like that. It's just the totality of trying to be transparent while respecting somebody's privacy, but having a guiding document that you fall back on to say, you know, this is what we do in these situations. And, and just like I can't talk about your child's consequences, we have a, a process, and this is how we react. And so, that's what we're trying to, to make sure is in place and is built, and I, I know Dr. Reasoners had plenty of conversations about things we're trying to implement and to, to reassure the staff and faculty. But that's, I guess that's what's at the heart of it.
So, in tonight's personnel agenda, there are, you know, two actions on that personnel agenda related to student discipline and support for, um, teachers and, and for students, um, primarily at the complex, in, in both primary and elementary. Um, we are, um, seeking to, um, transfer an employee into an ISS paraprofessional to support, uh, short-term behavior goals there, and also hire, well, transfer a classroom teacher that, where we have a, where we have a, an overage, um, into a step K-five teacher to provide some opportunities for behavioral management and restorative practices and counseling for students, um, anywhere from three to ten days. So, we're implementing both initiatives, um, fairly soon. When I say soon, I mean very soon. And so, we'll be working with our principals at both, both Mrs. Bryan and Mrs. Morris and their staffs to, uh, implement both of these new initiatives. Obviously, in a perfect world, we would have liked to have had these in place at the, at the start of the school year, um, but, uh, this is where we are now, and we're, we're not waiting until, um, next year to make a, make a big change when we see a need immediately for some additional supports for, for both schools, and we're going to implement that.
I think it's an interesting word to use is consequences, because if you step back and look at the system in its entirety, holistically, right? You know, when we talk discipline for our children, we're automatically looking at the classroom, just the classroom. But when you're talking about a ISS, or even a, a at-home suspension, or, Lord forbid, suspension, or lord forbid, expulsion, you know, not only is the child impacted at that point, but at the ISS level, in-school suspension, now you've lost time teaching that child in-classroom. If they're at home, you've lost both teacher time and student time, getting valuable class time, because now the teacher's gotta spend time getting the classwork to them right at home, and then working through those challenges, if you will, and when the child comes back from whatever, then they're playing catch-up, so sometimes the teach, teachers standing back, you know, helping them extra time in the classroom to get them back up to speed. So there's consequences, not just in the classroom right then and there, right, but there's, there's challenges and consequences, no matter what we do, to affect change in the classroom. So I think it's important when we're talking to everybody, whether it's parents or teachers or whatever, that we keep that in mind. It's not just about now. Think about next week, think about next month, think about next year, when you got the student again, or, or whatever the case may be, but there's more challenges and consequences than just the immediate in the classroom. So it's interesting that word you use. Sorry.
And, oh, no, that's okay. And one of the things that you mentioned, and I don't, I can't see it here, was the communication between the administrators and the, I think it was the staff, the teachers, kind of, what is your strategy to kind of increase one's ability to be able to communicate vice versa with each other?
So I think, you know, the, the staff, the administrators have not seen this report yet, and so this is, I shared it publicly for the first time with you this evening, and so we'll be having an admin council meeting tomorrow, and we're gonna talk about some of these areas that were prevalent, and we're gonna come together and, and create strategies and opportunities for, for us to meet some of these needs. Now, I try to model face-to-face communication with people. I like to try to meet with people face-to-face whenever possible. I try to be present in the schools whenever possible. I'm, I'm quite visible in, in the schools, especially at the complex since I've started, and so I, I enjoy helping and enjoy being part of the solution and, and being hands-on in my approach, and I hope that I model that for all of our administrators. But we'll be working on this and having, having conversations about how to meet some of these challenges and opportunities that were, that the staff expressed to me.
So now, if, as an example, or hypothetically, if I was a staff member and say I didn't feel comfortable with going to my direct supervisor, or perhaps I didn't even feel comfortable maybe coming to you, what, what would be your suggestion that I should do in that, if that were to happen?
So if we had someone that had concerns but didn't want to come see me and didn't want to see their administrator either, we could certainly implement a, some type of suggestion box, or something that's anonymous, something that's completely anonymous, I'm open to doing that. I want people, staff, teachers, all of our employees to feel like they can be heard. It's important that they feel comfortable. It will take time, and that's why I did not want Listening Days to be a one-and-done, okay? This was an opportunity for me to get a, a real pulse of where we are, what are some of our challenges, what does the staff view, think and feel, and, and, because they're, they're the ones that are living it every day in the schools. We're gonna have two more of these, and some of the needs may change, and we're gonna be sharing the data again, just like this, just like this evening, when we have the data from January, and when we have the data from the spring and April and May, we're gonna share that again, and some of these may change. And so we're gonna have multiple opportunities for people to share, and as, as they get a little bit more comfortable, get to know me a little bit better, perhaps still even more people, I would love to see, I thought 75 was great for the first time, I thought it was outstanding, and would love to see well over 100, or 150 staff want to come and speak with me next time about the budget and about how we can plan for next year. So we're gonna provide multiple opportunities and differentiate how we allow people to, to feel comfortable, you know, I've had a couple of people have reached out to me on email, if people, people have called, I've stopped by to see them, and so it's been, it's been good. But we want to, as you said, make it, make it a situation where people feel comfortable and can, and can come and talk with, with, with me or a director or, or their administrator, just has to, we have to open and channel those, those opportunities for communication. And we, we will continue to do Listening Days, I think it's, I think it's very important.
Mr. Goodman, that's an excellent point. I was thinking about the military side of the house, right? They had anonymous boxes, we used to call it Any Mouse, in the Marine Corps, Any Mouse, instead of anonymous, you know, with the spelling, we didn't have crayons for, but anyway.
So, yeah.
But, but having those boxes, hard boxes for them to drop in there, there was always a stigma with the military with doing online stuff, because they thought they were tracking you back to your personal email account, personal computer and stuff like that. There was always a stigma with getting valid comments from your populace, if you will. So I think that's.
Yeah, and, and we may do that, the boxes, as well as Google Forms, if I can work with technology to ensure with absolute certainty that nothing can be traced back and is completely 100% anonymous.
It won't matter.
We'll, we'll implement something like that, because it's, I, I, I respect that some people want to be heard, but I don't want to necessarily know it was me that said it, and I, and I have to respect that.
Yep. Yeah, they had the same, same stuff in the military where, no, no, it's not tracking anything, and I was in meetings where they had those results come back to them, right, here's your comments, here's your ranking, here's your everything, and nothing was tied to it, but getting your lower people to, our Marines, our lower PFCs and Lance Corporals to put stuff in there, it was like pulling teeth, nope, I'm not doing anything, 'cause it's gonna come back to me. Yeah. Just a challenge.
Yeah.
I think that's a lot of the problem is, probably, you know, to think there's gonna be retaliation behind it, and we want to put people at ease about that, that they have a voice, and it's gonna be heard, but you gotta work with us.
And we don't tol, tolerate retaliation if we hear about it. I mean, we've heard from numerous people who felt that they've been retaliating in their careers and whatnot, and so one of the things this board has come across is that we don't, if we hear about it, we don't tolerate it, we could come to you and ask about it, but at the end of the day, that's the same thing as bullying in my book.
Absolutely.
Same exact thing.
Any other comments? All right, that leads us to seven dot zero nine, the 100-day report.
Okay. It is my pleasure to share with you this evening a report of my first 100 days as superintendent. As I stated previously a few moments ago, I believe that decisions that are well informed are based on using data from multiple sources, including stakeholder input. The objectives of gathering data for decision-making were to become informed of the total Buckingham County Public Schools operations, to include finance, human resources, instruction, student services, maintenance, transportation, technology, and food service, to ensure that our school division processes are effective, cost-efficient, and student-centered, and to identify school division strengths and opportunities from multiple perspectives. This report documents information gathered from an online survey, from staff listening days, from stakeholder input, and from my own observations as superintendent. Information from various meetings and activities were used to identify strengths, opportunities for growth, and recommendations for the future. I previously shared information regarding the online survey. As a reminder, there were 63 respondents to the online survey, and the number-one priorities for Buckingham County Public Schools that respondents stated were to address school safety, school staff compensation, student discipline with consistent consequences, and increased parental involvement and accountability. Additional stakeholder input included a total of 58 meetings held from July 1st through September 26th. Stakeholder meetings included meeting with individual school board members, the county administrator, members of the board of supervisors, the SCA, the Buckingham Education Association, the Buckingham NAACP, school board office employees, and others. On page five of my 100 Days Report, I provide a summary of our school division strengths and opportunities for growth. I would also like to share several recommendations I have for the future of Buckingham County Public Schools. Provide regionally competitive salaries and benefits for staff. Address concerns around student behavior, bullying, and consistent consequences for student conduct. I also believe that school safety as a whole, as well as mental health supports for students, could fall within this realm. Address concerns around communication and ensure transparency with all stakeholders. Provide unique opportunities through course offerings to encourage part-time enrollment of homeschool or private school students in order to help address a declining ADM. Complete a comprehensive salary study, asset mapping of all non-SOQ positions, and an updated strategic plan. School safety and mental health supports will be included in our updated strategic plan. And finally, enhance existing CTE and elective course offerings at both the high school and the middle school. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding my 100 Days Report.
Madam Chair, I got a question for the superintendent.
Go ahead, Mr. Bridget.
Dr. Reasoner, we, we have a, we just did a proclamation about bullying, and you mentioned bullying in your 100 Days, which is a, a big, probably the number-one issue in schools all over the country. And maybe, I don't know, I guess maybe I'm just wondering, how big of an issue do we have with it? I know we, we need to have a zero tolerance, and I understand that.
Yes.
But.
Yes.
Because when I talk to folks out in the community, and they stop me and they're talking to me, you know, they mention it, and, and I do tell them that we're working on it, and we're addressing it, and we are taking, you're taking corrective action to not only to prevent, but to administratively deal with any bullying.
So I think, you know, there's a, bullying, there, there's a specific definition for what bullying is, and bullying is not, is not always student conduct issues, okay? Bullying is that repeated offense, and, and trying to gain power or, or something over another student, and so sometimes students are, have challenging behaviors that might be isolated to themselves, or it might be towards a student or toward a teacher, that's not necessarily bullying, if, if, if you get what I'm saying.
Oh, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, so I think we need to continue, you know, we, our bullying, anti-bullying efforts need to extend beyond the month of October, okay? And so we've done that with, you know, with our policies and with what we're doing, working with our administrators, working with, working with the teachers, and, and so that, that's, it's a typical, it's a difficult question to answer.
Yeah.
But I will say that a lot of people may misunderstand what bullying truly is, okay? And not to discredit it, but to, to misunderstand, there, there are certainly conduct issues with some of our students, and that we are working to help address that through added supports in our schools, through increased professional learning for our staff, and I would love to be able to put in next year's budget, you know, one of my budget priorities is going to be a behavioral specialist in all of our schools. If we can't afford it in all of our schools, then we're gonna try to do what we can with our schools, but I think we do need a full-time behavioral specialist in our schools next year.
Have you ever heard of a video, a video documentary called Bully? I think that's what the complete title was, was Bully. And when I worked at Beaumont years ago, and the reason why I ask that is because the superintendent of the facility had required every unit to sit down with their kids and watch that video, and it's basically a documentary of a bullying victim, and what that individual's life was like, being bullied every day. We certainly don't have the issues in the school system that we have had in the juvenile correctional center, and I don't mean to put the two on the same plane, but it, it was a really good video for the kids to watch, and I don't know, maybe some preventive measure, maybe if you got a hold of it and reviewed it and you thought it was appropriate for the kids, for the kids to watch and just.
I'll, I'll take a look at it and share it with our leadership team, and we'll make decisions related to if we want to move forward with something like that.
Okay, that's all I have.
If I could, you've talked a little bit about some of the mental health kind of things, and I know Mr. Gregory has talked about this, and Mr. Snoddy, and some of the other board members. Talk a little bit about, and you've mentioned it somewhat, the behavior specialists. Number one, the importance of those mental health kind of assets, and also kind of what, what, give us a description of, of what that means.
So, with regards to mental health supports, like I said, I, I recognize that, that we need more support in this area, and so, like I said, I, I want us to be able to hire a full-time behavioral specialist in all of our schools. We have contracted services right now that are very helpful, but I don't think meet our needs fully, that we, we need. We need professional learning for our staff, and, and we do, and so we've reached out to T-TAC for assistance with some of that, VCU T-TAC. So there's multiple things that we need to do to help address, address behavioral and mental health challenges for our students, but I think we need, you know, the staffing, we need additional staff to support our students, we need to also work with our parents and help them, help guide them to where resources are, might be available to help them as well. And so we talked, we talked about a lot of this today, in fact, in our VTSS division-level team meeting that we held this morning, that was one of our topics that we discussed as well. So it's like, I, I see it as a multi-layered, multi-tiered approach, there's not one solution or one strategy, if you will, that we can implement to help address this issue. I think we need to tackle it from multiple avenues.
And.
We're not gonna solve it.
And then on the next question, with the results, it was 10% of parents, 13% of community supporters. How, in your opinion, how do we get more parents? I don't want to use the term involved, because I mean, you know, parents, they're involved. How, is, is there some way that we could?
So I think, one of, one of the things that I would really like us to do, you know, there are negative connotations around social media, but social media can also be a very powerful and positive tool for school divisions like ourselves, and one of the things I'd like to do is to offer, you know, to provide a, a social media manager, part-time stipend-type position, to really enhance our social media presence, to get our, to get the word out of what programs we have to offer our, our parents, and what resources are available, and have, you know, community nights where we have dinner and we invite parents in to do some, some professional learning centered around a lot of these different topics. And I think we, we can leverage some of that and fund it through our Title I grant, we talked about that today as well, and so we just need to continually spread our positive message about what resources are available, what, what are the positive things that are happening in our schools, and how we can help support parents and continually reach out, and it is an, it will be an ongoing initiative, we can't just do it once, and but we have to continually reach out to our parents in multiple ways. Social media is, is one of the ones, is one of the ways that we would do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. That leads us to seven dot one zero, cost of admission to athletic events. We've been approached by different people about the cost of admission for students and wanting them to be, wanting it to be free, and also just, you know, like maybe a reduced price or things like that, so this is the time for us to all talk about that and, and maybe not make a decision, but just air that out to see how we feel about it as well.
The comments that I received were, you know, these are the student's schools, and they should not have to pay to be able to come attend the sporting events, and also how costly it was for families with multiple children, which I was one, and how much it costs to bring them in. It, you know, it's a tight money year, you know, I'm not sure how we would offset it, but maybe if the parents didn't have to pay for all their kids to come in, you know, both parents would come and we'd get more participation from the community if they didn't have to pay for their children, but I, I want to give a voice to what has been brought to us.
Yeah, and I'll piggyback off of Ms. Morris's situation as well. I've had individuals call, call me and state that, you know, the, the prices are too high for a family of four, a family of five, so it, I mean, it's pretty steep. I, I have four kids of my own, so all of them don't come to the game for that reason. However, we, we have to make sure we do an informed decision on this, and by informed, I mean, we have. I mean, we have to call around to other school divisions to see how they handle it, because there's, there's more to this than just saying that all of our kids can go to, come for free. Because how are we going to recognize who are our kids compared to the other kids? Are we going to pay for IDs for every child? Are we going to pay for more staff members at these games? It, it's a lot to take in, so I would like to table this discussion until we get more informed decisions, and I would like to have the athletic director here to speak on his, to speak on that behalf.
Are you suggesting that we might want to do an athletic, a ticket study? Because we, we could certainly do that, where we could, as we're looking at the other, the other eight school divisions that we are comparing ourselves with salary-wise, we could certainly do that with athletic ticket prices and athletic ticket scenarios, if you will, some of what, some of what you described.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, because like Appomattox, I think they'll have, like, you put a can of food in a container, and the kids get in free for that.
Okay.
You know, maybe that's just one game, I don't know.
So we will prepare, and we will do an athletic ticket survey, but it will extend, it will extend beyond simply the price of the tickets, but unique scenarios that other school divisions may be implementing to kind of maybe help, help increase participation, but also offset costs.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we will do that.
Cool.
Mr. Goodman, you had something?
I just wanted to say, you know, in my opinion, I see both sides of it. You know, I have four children, and when it gets to the playoffs, I just, I can't afford to go to the games then. But also, I can also understand, because sometimes you go to some of the games, and you just see kids just running around everywhere, and I just think that whatever it is that we're going to do, it needs to be a balanced approach in terms of, you know, understanding that, yeah, you know, there are some, you know, revenue challenges with parents and with, with kids, but it shouldn't be a circumstance where people just drop their kids off, and their kids are just running around having a free-for-all and doing all that. Because especially some, sometimes, you know, you witness some things with some kids, and you're like, well, where, where's your parent at, you know? And so I just, I agree with Mr. Gregor, we should use some prudence and everything with it.
Madam Chair, if I may, I agree with my colleague down on the end there, that when you go to, especially the football games, and it's not an indictment against anybody, but you do see a lot of kids running around and playing and visiting, and I get that, kids are going to be kids. I'm not trying to take that away from them. But at what point, you know, if we have an admission process, and there's, we're letting kids in, there, there also could be a liability issue. If we're just letting all the kids in for free, and they don't have to pay, you know, how many kids, more kids are we going to have out there? And are we going to run into a serious incident or a liability issue that we got to seriously think about?
It's one of the, it's one of the reasons we probably didn't have the bonfire this year, if I'm not mistaken, was, you know, we had bonfire for, for our high school students, and mostly, I think, the seniors for the most part, right? But we can't really do that, can't justify that, because everybody pushes their, you know, child out the door with some siblings to go out there and have fun at the bonfire, and then, you know, that, that 17-year-old senior is responsible for maintaining, maintaining the other children, so it's, it's become an issue there. Another point of, I guess, confusion is, we're not tracking any child coming into the games. Like, there's no special ticket you give out, and we're not tracking, you know, children numbers coming in the door for, for capturing data lost, or monetary funds lost on the athletic fund, so the impact to that bottom line on that athletic fund, while maybe minimal, may not be. And so when you're talking about buying uniforms and helmets, and you got volleyball, soccer, all the sports, baseball, softball, all the sports being covered down by that, that line item on that budget for the athletic fund, and it's all coming from ticket sales, it's not coming, it's not all coming from us, it's coming from ticket sales. So when you start cutting to that bottom line, what does, what does that look like? And I think that's, you know, that's, that's an issue that goes into not just studying everybody else's, because they might have a different way of doing their budget than we do. But, but when you're talking about ticket sales at the counter, like, you know, when Starets there, I don't think, I don't think we're watching, you know, tick marks for students seemingly 18 and under coming in the door, at least not when I was there, coming through the door, you know, through the gate, excuse me. So it's one of those things, when you're talking about a ticket study, what are we talking about? We taking the average over two or three games, or which games are we talking about? Football games, all the games, basketball games? So it's one of those things where you, you're probably not going to have the data you want to make a solid decision, because the numbers won't reflect every sport. So when you start looking at that, I mean, and how, how it impacts the athletic fund for, for uniform purposes, shirts, jerseys, you know, everything else that goes with the sports, it's one of those things where, I don't know that you're going to be able to do the data dump that you want. I think it's going to be one of those things where we're probably going to have to come to the table and say, hey, look, why don't we just do this, and cut the price down to this, and all the kids, where it was, or, you know, whatever, and then see what happens. Because I don't think you're going to have the data you need or we need to make a proper, proper decision. I just don't think you're going to have it, not across the board for all sports. It's going to be very difficult to capture that.
Well, some other school systems, no child can come in unless they're a company of an adult. I don't know what age group that would be, you know, I mean, who knows?
I would love for our children, our students, our students, I would love for our students to come to games for free, would love it. But at the end of the day, that's not what you're going to see. It's not, you're not going to see that. You'll see our students and then everybody else.
Well, and then I think we also, this is the time maybe to possibly look at some kind of booster or alumni club that could help offset that type of thing. So that's maybe something that they could look at as well.
Yeah. T-shirts.
Absolutely. Sell some Buckingham merch, man.
Can't even wear it, sell them in t-shirts.
T-shirts.
So I've got a question though, along those lines, and I'm a little bit ignorant to it, but, so it's, when we do ticket sales, it's just basically one price for whoever comes in to the game, right? Is it, is that how it is? One particular price?
I believe so, Mr. Tally.
Or do students get a, like, the high school I went to, there was a set price, which wasn't a lot of money back then. No, Mr. Tally, if you would, please come to the head of the congregation.
What? Congregation?
Amen.
But there was, there was, like, a set price, but students of the high school, when they showed their ID, then they got a reduced price. For example, if, back then, if a ticket was $2.50 to attend a sporting event, then a student got in when they flashed their ID for a buck and a quarter, but anybody else had to pay the $2.50.
Well, since I've been here, since 2022, when I first got here, the ticket price was only $5, and if you were playing a sport in season, you got in for free. I'll be honest with you, I was shocked, because when I come from the Richmond area, $8 is the normal price across the board, other than faculty and staff. It's like, it's like $8 for the ticket price. Right now, we're still below, would you go into the Richmond area? I'm not sure about the area around here, but like I said, we went from $5, which I thought was almost unheard of, and then we are $7, and I think we're still kind of below, but at the same time, we used to have it, since I've been here, that if you were in season, the students did get in, alongside they were playing a sport in, in the middle of their season. So baseball players cannot get free for football games, cheerleaders could, or golf players, things like that.
I was told by Mr. Goan, Coach Goan, that it was a decision by the James River District that they, they would all have the same ticket price, but I've not done the research behind that, but I assume that statement to be true, so that's what, that's what I was told.
Oh, okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, then the ticket price of what we charge is agreed upon by the whole James River District, and that's pretty much what everybody else?
That's what Ms., that's what Coach Goan said, but when we look and compare ourselves to other school divisions through salary, not everyone that we would compare ourselves is a member of the James River District, that's why I suggested that we look at it from the lens of how we're doing our salary study, which will be shared next month, those other, there was eight other school divisions.
If I'm not mistaken, did we vote on this a while back, too much, because that's what?
We never, we don't usually set the price for the, the athletic events that I'm aware of, it's just the school lunches.
So basically for a size five family, you're looking at an increase of basically $10?
Yes.
Right? $2 a ticket went up, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know.
And then, like I said, the athletes there are in season, they were in season, now they pay, so that's another increase right there also.
Well, I think what we should do is have a committee, I guess, Mr. Goan can get maybe some people from the outside world, I mean, you know, maybe some people who want to start a Mr. Club, I don't know, but I would think we'd want to try to find out the different prices, and, and what other people are doing, and, and what we can do to help, if, if it's at all possible. How do you all think?
Agreed.
And also, I was, someone, it's mentioned to me once, and I don't know if anyone else was, this was mentioned to them, about, like, people bringing animals, like dogs and cats and raccoons to the, to the, to the events. So I don't know if we need to, you know, of course, I'm being facetious, but I don't know if we need to look at that as well, because I know some people were upset by that, that, you know, so.
I would think that an animal would be banned from the school athletic event unless they were a service dog, a registered, trained.
Service dog.
Service dog, that's the only exception, I would think, but I will look into that as well, okay?
Does any other points of interest on this?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's move on to eight dot zero one, thank you, Mr. Tally. School Board Member Committee Updates. I know that, believe we're having.
Two weeks. Facilities is two weeks.
Yeah, Facilities is in two weeks, and then the, I thought the, what is it, Health and Safety? I think that's, that's on the 29th, that was the last week, week before, never mind, okay. And we had a meeting with the Board of Supervisors and Mr. Heslop today, a few of us did a walk-through at the high school. It was interesting, all the money we need. We went through the cafeteria, the auditorium, the boiler room, and different hallways, a few restrooms, and looked at some of the doors, how that works as far as an intruder, and it was pretty informative. I wish more people could have came, but I appreciate Mr. Heslop showing us all the different issues that he's facing, and that's all I've got to say about this.
I thought that it was interesting to see things that were still operational prior to World War II. I mean, you know, it was constructed in 1939, and I said, man, this was here before World War II, right at the start of World War II, that's amazing, so I had no idea, we were looking at everything, and Mr. Heslop did such a wonderful job, he gave us this analogy of a, of a heart, and showed us the, the heart, the, the center of everything, and I just said, man, this is amazing.
And our focus, you know, for the visit was to look at, you know, possibilities for the future in terms of renovation. We fully support renovating our existing structure as a cost-saving measure, but also just to bring it up to the 21st century, I guess. But, but, and, and Mr. Heslop did an amazing job keeping, keeping that as the focal point, and, and opportunities of, of enhancement, things that definitely need to be addressed from a safety perspective, as well as functionality perspective. Nicely done.
Okay, that's all the meeting, now we need to go into closed session under the same sections as we were in before, someone wants to do that, please?
Madam Chair, before we do that, may I address the committee? I want to take the moment to express my heartfelt gratitude for the privilege of serving on this incredible community and the school board. It has truly been an honor to stand alongside so many dedicated parents, educators, and community members who share the same vision to see our students thrive and to grow our schools stronger. As we approach November, I fully intend to continue this work and to remain committed to being a strong voice for our community. I believe deeply in the potential of our schools and the power we have together to shape brighter future for our children. No matter what the future holds, serving in this role has been one of my greatest honors. Thank you for your trust, your support, and your unwavering dedication to our students and staff. Together, we can continue to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
I'll drink to that.
Bravo.
Madam Chair, I recommend we go back into closed session as allowed under items A1 and 29 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for appointments and reservations of specific employees in discussion of public contracts.
Second.
A motion's been made by Mrs. Morris and second by Mr. Snoddy to, to return to closed session as allowed under items A1 and 29 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia. All those in favor, please raise your hand.